Live Sunday at 9:00 AM Eastern on American History TV on C-SPAN 3.
The Institute of the Black World 21st Century held this national town hall meeting on gentrification at the New Jersey Institute for Technology. The event began with Ron Daniels, president of the institute, talking about why the town hall is in Newark. This is two hours and 20 minutes.
It's not by accident. We are here because at the State of the Black World Conference, we came deliberately to put a focus on Newark. A focus on Newark because we believe in what's happening in Newark. A focus in Newark because of the history of struggle here. Protracted struggle, rebellion, resistance, triumph, tragedy, and moving forward. And the eventual ascension to the office of mayor of Roz J. Baraka. Yeah. I give it up. And so, but it's not, it is not just about him. And I will never forget, I was struck by his slogan, "Hit Me." He said, "When I become mayor, we become mayor." And what that said was, this is a collective enterprise. This is Ujima. This is collective work and responsibility. And so, there are policies being elaborated here that we think are important. Last year, we were here because we were talking about a Marshall Plan, because he has called for a Marshall Plan. And we are going to work towards the creation of a Marshall Plan to get massive investment in these cities, because no matter what our mayors do, for all of the good efforts that are made, unless we can get massive resources in our community, we are not going to be able to solve all the problems. So, we must fight for reparations, and we must fight for a Marshall Plan. Now, of course, this question of struggling against gentrification is not without controversy. It's complex. It's difficult. And so, there are voices who may agree and disagree, and that's fine. Disagreement, as long as it's constructive and is intended to help move the process forward, it should be welcomed. It's not, it's not always comfortable, but nobody ever said it would be comfortable, right? So, there has to be creative tension. And now, out of that creative tension comes better partnerships, but it sharpens our analysis. It sharpens our thinking. So, I just want to put that out there. This is not about a blanket endorsement of anyone. It is about an understanding that someone has the right vision, the right direction, because where there is no vision, we for sure, we know the people will perish. So, vision is the most important thing, and values behind that. So, we just wanted to lay that out there in terms of where we're going. We will be back to Newark. This summit was about the fact that across this country, black people and black institutions are being displaced. So, we came here to Newark, because there are, at least there are efforts that are being made to try to mitigate this. Doesn't mean that that's necessarily always being successful, because gentrification is a monster. It ain't the first time that black people have been removed. That's why we talked about the Negro removal of the 21st century, because in the 21st century, it was urban renewal. There've been various interrations, because as long as white supremacy is in place and a capitalist political economy, we will always be challenged until we transform that system. So, now, I want to introduce a number of other people to you, because we had this summit for the last couple of days. It was a summit, so everybody couldn't come to the summit, because it was a summit. But we, we have convened some of the most brilliant minds, activists, organizers, elected officials, faith leaders from all across this country, to come and deliberate and share our ideas about how we are going to deal with this crisis, and we are going to deal with it. In fact, David Harris from the Charles Hamilton Houston Institute for Race and Justice from Harvard, he left. He said, "You know, Ron, we came here on an emergency, but we are now emerging. We're emerging. We will be victorious." So, we want to let you know, we can't introduce them all, because that would be too difficult. But we just want to know, have all of the resource people who came from all across the country, just to stand up so people can see you. Yeah. Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. And now, I'd like to introduce the panel for today, and the format is a conversational format. It is a format to try to tap into the wisdom, the ideas, the experiences of these folks on the stage, who've come from different cities from across the country, from different disciplines, different experiences, different expertise, decide to see, to share, to share with you and among themselves, a part of what we've been thinking about, what we've been trying to do in terms of dealing with gentrification. So, let me just start in no particular order. They can just give a wave, and starting off with Dr. Jeffrey Lowe, who is Associate Professor in the Department of Urban Planning and Environmental Policy at Texas Southern University from Houston, Texas. Give him a wave. And returning, the return of the native son. I was so happy, because I knew him from the Jackson Campaign and beyond. He's one of your favorites. He's been here for you many, many years. He is now the president of the Council of Bishops of AME Church. He is president of all the AME bishops. Would you please welcome your own Bishop Reginald Jackson? Ellen M. Lee is the Director of Community Economic Development from the great city of New Orleans. Next brother needs no introduction, because he's a revolutionary in office. Y'all know him well. It is Assemblyman Charles Barron from East New York. All the way from Omaha, Nebraska, the African-American Empowerment Network in Omaha, in my judgment, is one of the most formidable, powerful models of operational unity I know. Would you please welcome Willie Barney? And you know, one of our favorite places happens to be outside down somewhere in Mississippi, right? We got a whole lot of love for Jackson, Mississippi, right? Well, Mayor Chokwe Anta Lumumba couldn't be here, and he sent his apology, but he didn't have to apologize, because he sent his chief of staff up in here, Dr. Sophia Amari, Chief of Staff for Mayor Chokwe Anta Lumumba. And of course, she needs no introduction either, because she is like everywhere. She is a bad sister. Y'all know her well. She just gets stuff done, right? She just gets stuff done. She was on my radio show the other day, and she almost took the show over, but that's all right. And that's Frederica Bay, all right? And that's wisdom women in support of the Million Man March, and has she been supporting the Million Man March, a great servant. Also, we have joining us shortly, if he hasn't already, Chairman Larry Ham. The Chairman Larry Ham show up yet? The chairman? The chairman? The Chairman Larry Ham is in the house. And finally, another brilliant mind, one of the great faith leaders in this country, has come to join us, all the way from Oakland, California. He is with the Live Free Initiative of Faith in Action. They call him Pastor Mike, and it's Reverend Michael McBride, all the way from Berkeley, California. And last but not least, my dear friend, who has been the one who has moderated in so many things. You see him on MSNBC, has on his radio, is on his own radio program. Oh, did I forget Dr. Julianne Malvoe? Oh, Lord, I'm right. That's because I was a candidate, get smacked. And I don't want to get smacked, right? So, I was going down my list. So, y'all all know her, right? I don't want to miss her. She is black America's leading political economist, and much more. The former, the President Emeritus of Benedict College for Women, Dr. Julianne Malvoe is in the house, right? And quickly, before I forget, I do have to say, because on your program, you have Danny Glover, right? But I have to apologize for Danny. Listen carefully. Danny was here yesterday. He was in New York, planning an event for Harry Belafonte. But Danny's a film star and television and so forth, so he had to go back for a shooting. But he sends his regrets, because you know Danny's with us. You know he loves us, but so he sends his love and respect. So, let's give it up for Danny Glover anyhow. I guess I forgot another one. Oh, yeah, that's, okay, all right. All right, get us the other one. And also, from the Rainbow Push Coalition, the Vice President and Chief Strategy or Engagement Programs of the Rainbow Push Coalition, Reverend Dr. Sheridan Todd Yerry, from Chicago. Thank you Reverend Delamso for saving me from myself. And okay, now, and by the way, the way we're going to do this is going to be a conversation. It'll be moderated by my dear beloved friend coming up, time permitting. We will have index cards, and we'll be able to hopefully entertain a few questions. But the way we'll do it is, you'll raise your hand, we'll give some index cards to you. We'll take about the first four, see how that rolls, because at the end of the day, at the conclusion, the most important thing is that we hear from our host, the Honorable Roz J. Baraka. So, that's how we're rolling. Would you please welcome to the roster now to moderate this session? You see him on, you hear him on Sirius XM Progress 127. Every time you turn on MSNBC, he all over the place now. So, I mean, I almost have to get an autograph from this brother, right? But it's Mark Thompson, my dear beloved friend, Reverend Mark Thompson, to moderate the conversation.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, all right. God bless you. Assalamu alaikum. Hotep, Habarigani, what it is. It's good to be here in Newark, New Jersey. I was just at Reverend Sharpton's convention, and had the privilege of interviewing Senator Cory Booker just a few minutes ago. And I want to let Dr. Daniels and others know, I did my best to get him to change his schedule, to come be with us tonight, and we almost did it. But he also sends his greetings as well, and understands the importance of this, of this conversation. Amen? In terms of our other esteemed elected official, Mayor Roz Baraka. In 1990, Roz Baraka, and he was a student at Howard University, and I was a student at the University of the District Gulf Columbia. In 1990, Reverend Wilson remembers, we organized the student boycott of Virginia Beach, Virginia. Because in 1989, see, Black Lives Matter, we've been, that's a new term, but our struggle with law enforcement has been going on all these years. And you all remember what happened in 1989 with the students at Virginia Beach, was a place we always went to on Labor Day weekend. So, I just want to acknowledge the longevity of the mayor's relationship. We had no idea that either one of us would be where we are now. You just never know. It could have gone the other way, but God has put us in a position to continue to serve our people, and he very much so continuing in the footsteps of the great Ken Gibson Ashay, and his father, Emory Baraka Ashay. So, please give the mayor a round of applause again. And even though I said we were together in 1990, I'll just let you all in on a little secret. I usually tell people I'm a millennial, so don't tell anybody. That 1990 story, don't leave this room, okay? All right. To Dr. Ron Daniels, who really, you know, I have a lot of affection for Ron, because I know the sacrifices he makes for our people. He's not someone who's in the so-called celebrity echelon, so to speak, but he works so, so hard and tirelessly. It's really very, very touching. And I feel bad, I say, "Brother, you know, anything I can do to help you, let me know." But he knows how busy I am, and he just takes it all on himself. At a stage in life where a whole lot of folk just, you know, they ready to retire and give up. He hasn't done that. He also, he himself, even though they really were somewhat peers, when Dr. Ron Walters passed away, we needed to figure out who was going to pick up the mantle, Rick, in terms of conscious and woke academia. Because some folk, Dr. Malvoe, go get these PhDs and go to these big ivory towers, and they're not in touch, they're not on the ground with our people. And Ron has continued to do that, and has been a consummate organizer, in terms of organizing meetings and conferences and think tanks and things like this. The Institute of the Black World, going all the way back to the first black political convention in Gary, Indiana. And so, we are, we are just so, so thankful for what he does and what he continues to do. And I'm telling you something else, too. I don't mind saying, we're on WBAI, WPFW, Sirius XM, and C-SPAN. Ron, I think, holds the record of any individual, y'all back me up on this and look it up, of having C-SPAN broadcast his events. I don't know anyone else. He has a 90% rate. When people call me, say, "Brother, how can I get my event on C-SPAN?" I said, "Invite Ron Daniels, put him on program." And C-SPAN will be right there. So, and I'm thankful for that as well. So, please, give Dr. Ron Daniels a round of applause for all that he is and all that he does. Picking up the mantle from Dr. Ron Walters, we were sitting on the radio one day on WOL, on 4th and 8th Street Northeast, in the old studio, the first property that Kathy Hughes owned. And I made a decision that I would have Dr. Ron Walters come and sit in the studio with me and my co-host, Dick Gregory Ashay. And for our community, we would come up with a working definition for self-determination. And him being the academician that he was, we crafted that definition. What it was, was this. Self-determination, Coogee Shakalier, is a people's command and control of their own cultural destiny, their own social destiny, their own economic destiny, and their own political destiny, without any external interference from any external forces. When we talk about this issue of gentrification, that is not self-determination. People decide where we live, where we move, what we do. They want to live in the suburbs, y'all Negroes move into the city. Then white folks decide, "We want to move back into the city. Y'all black folk got to move out. We can't have anything." Now, who's to say 50 years from now, as they push us out of the city, they don't come back and say, "All right, we want the suburbs back. Y'all got to move back into the city." That's not living. That's not being in control of ourselves and our movement as a free people. And that is why this conversation is important. And so, we will begin the conversation on the narrative. Each of the panelists are those who choose to. Shall we ask, respond to this. What does gentrification look like in your community, nationally or from the perspective of your organization or institution? This will give us a greater picture of how this is happening. And again, this is not just for us, before this national, international audience that is watching, because we know it's happening, but our panelists will give us even more specifics and detail on what is happening, right where they can see it. So, we will go down the line.
All righty. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Daniels, for again convening us, and thank all of you for coming. There's any place you could have been on this evening, Friday night, could be anywhere, but you're here because you want to soak up some knowledge, so we appreciate it. Dr. Daniels actually asked me to provide some context, some historical context, to this gentrification, because basically, gentrification is an assault on our self-determination. But even more than an assault on our self-determination, this is something called been there, done that. You know, African-American people, we're losing, we lost, the Great Recession caused us to lose nearly half of our homeownership, caused us to lose a significant amount of our wealth. Set the tone in some places for the possibility of land takeover. But understand that in the wake of enslavement, in the wake of enslavement, I have this computer here, not because I need it, but because there are a couple of numbers that I really want you to have. In 1880, just 15 years after enslavement, black folks had $1 for every $36 the white folks had. 1890, we had more, $1 for every $26 that white folks had. 1900, $1 for every $23 white folks had. 1910, $1 for every $16 white folks had. Look at that progress, though. We went from $136 to $160. Now, but dig this, but dig this. Today, we have $7 for every $100 white folk have, or in other words, $1 for every $18 that white folks had. So, from a wealth perspective, from a wealth accumulation perspective, we're worse off in 2018 than we were in 1910. We were enslaved, just out, just out of enslavement. None of all these degrees, Mark, you talked about degrees, all these degrees folks got running around. Well, we didn't have those degrees then. One in 100 of us had gone to college. Many of our HBCUs were no better than, you know, high schools, really. Did not have endowments. Our sisters, our churchgoers, brothers and sisters were frying chickens and baking cakes for our HBCUs. But we were able to accumulate in ways that we never had before. Now, what had happened? Well, first of all, this is not, there is nothing trifling about the black community collectively. When people start talking about the wealth gap, they will tell you that we have some deficiency. We do not. What we do is we live in an era, and we have lived in a era through hostility, and something that I call economic envy. When we get it, white folks want it. That's just how it goes. And so, in 1910, we had over 100 black-owned banks. Now, we have 23. Now, some of it was changing in banking regulation that happened deliberately. There was a brother in Richmond, Virginia, John Mitchell. Now, he was something else. He had a pho, if you are, before anybody else did, had a Cadillac. He was ostentatious. They took his bank. They said the Negro was arrogant. They wrote it down, put it on a piece of paper. Maggie Lena Walker, in contrast, one of his contemporaries, was the first black woman to start a bank. It was called Penny Savings Bank, St. Luke's Penny Savings Bank. It ended up consolidating in 1929, 1930, and it became Consolidated Savings Bank. That bank thrived, and hundreds, if not thousands, of people in Richmond in the 1920s got their homes, because Consolidated was lending money to black people when other people would not. So, it's important to understand, we have made economic progress, but then people jump up in our faces and take our stuff. Economic envy is real. Tulsa, Oklahoma was about economic envy. Now, we, the story that some people will tell you, the melanin deficient will tell you that Tulsa was about Dick Roland, young shoe-shined guy, 19, raped or assaulted Sarah Page, 17-year-old elevator operator. Not. What, Dr. Olivia Hooker died not too long ago in November, and Dr. Hooker was just something else, but she was six when it happened. She remembers it. She remembers hiding under the table at her home, tablecloth hiding, she and her siblings, watched the white people come in. She, I mean, vivid memory of the folks who were so envious, broke her mother's Caruso records, took an axe to the piano, burned her doll's clothes. I mean, just evil, because black people had too much. When the Oklahoma governor later asked for a commission to investigate this, remember, nobody went to jail. They had pictures of people, black man physician came out of his house, hands up. They shot him. They just killed him. We don't know how many people were killed. Some people say 300, some say 600. We know that 35 square blocks were eviscerated. We know that millions of dollars were lost, and we know that nobody paid anything. In fact, the Red Cross didn't even want to go to Tulsa. They ended up going through some external forces, but they didn't want to come. They had us in concentration camps, y'all. People who had, and black women, the black women of the rich area of Tulsa were very bougie black women, one might say. They were not allowed to leave the reservation unless they would go do day's work for white people. I mean, they were not allowed. I know you want me to stop, I'm going to take two more minutes. I know you want me to stop.
Let me just say this, and I apologize, because I always forget to do that. We want to give in this first round, everybody just three to four minutes, because then we're going to come back, because you're going to get time to get all the rest in.
Well, Dr. Daniels had asked me to do the historical context, so I'm, I'm, oh, all right. Oh, yeah, okay, well, history takes a long time. Because I, okay. Anyway, the Tulsa piece, you all must, must just deal with. White folks have been stockpiling guns and waiting for an excuse. So, then, when the governor's commission came in, why did they have this? They said, "Too many Negroes with too..." And they didn't say Negroes either. Too many you-know-what with too much money. And so, we need to be clear that anytime we accumulate, there has been public policy to take from us. We should also be clear that public policy has conspired against us. The GI Bill, so many other things. I am going to stop, but when you look at public policy, look at the ways that we have systematically, systematically been discriminated against, systematically taken our stuff. And so, now, it's time, as I listened to Mayor Baraka this morning, and listened to so many others, when there is vacant land, it needs to be redistributed to the people who have been systematically sidelined. You know, when there are opportunities, they need to be distributed to the people who have been systematically sidelined. It is inexcusable, it is utterly inexcusable, for this wealth gap to exist as hard as black people work. And don't let anybody ever tell you that we don't work hard. Final point, before he snatched the mic, and he will do it. But final point is, when we look at all of this, in terms, in the context of economic envy and all this other stuff, we must look at the ways that we have to resist. We must look at the resistance that we must put out there. We have black mayors who do not have the sensibility of a Roz Baraka, who never met, yeah. They never met a developer that they don't want to slow dance with. And to our detriment, we have black city council people taking money under the table so that they can exploit our people. We cannot have that. Final point, financial literacy is not public policy. No, let me, financial literacy is not public policy. We must be responsible stewards of that which we've been blessed with. We must save and invest. But if we save and invest everything we got, we couldn't close the wealth gap. So, understand that when people say, "You say economic development, they say financial literacy," say no. Say, "We will be literate, but we also want our share." Reparations now.
Now, again, I apologize, I should have told you three to four minutes, for I didn't say it at the outset. I apologize for that. Let me also apologize, please keep Dr. Malvoe's mother in prayer, all right, as she is recovering. She's going to be okay, but let's continue, lift her up in prayer, okay? Lastly, before Charles comes, our esteemed elders have come in the room, and I need to ask their permission to continue. Dr. Jeffries and Dr. Jeffries, may we have your permission to continue? All right. What does gentrification look like in your community, nationally or from the perspective of your organization or institution? We'll go down the line. Charles, on down the line, three to four minutes, please.
Yes, sir.
Because we're going, you'll come back, trust.
I do. First, I want to say, I want to take the responsibility that Dr. Daniels spoke of, to provide the creative tension, and I think I'd like to play that role, only because we can talk about gentrification, but there's a larger problem, and that is the problem of a racist, predatory, parasitic, blood-sucking capitalist system. And the solution is revolution. The solution is socialism. The solution is us electing black officials that are not descriptively black, they look like us, but authentically black, they committed to us. Our biggest problem in our neighborhoods is black neo-colonial puppets of the Democratic Party. That is the problem in our neighborhood in New York. So, you know how we stop gentrification? How does gentrification look in East New York? In my section, it does not exist. And it doesn't exist because I got a beautiful African queen wife named Inez Barron, who's a city council member. I'm the state assembly member, so when the developers came to our community, and they showed us these pretty pictures, we asked them, "What is the AMI? What is the area median income requirement?" Because if it's not the area median income of East New York, you are not building it in East New York. East New York is the, the community had the largest increase in the black population is in East New York, 13.2%. Harlem lost 14% of its blacks, 400% increase of whites. Bed-Stuy, 600% increase of whites, lost 16% of its blacks. I have the distinct honor to be able to come before you and say, "I actually lost white population in my community." I lost them. They left. They left. I didn't ask them why, they left. So, if you see one or two or three or four or five whites in my neighborhood, they're passing through. But that's on a serious note, we got 13,000 black elected officials in this country. We've had mayors, we've had governors, we have city council members. We need to get radical revolutionaries elected. We need to get people that are really committed to us, because just having a black face in a high place doesn't mean anything, even, even if you are the president. Even if you are the president, they said, "Don't mess with the black president." Even if you are the president, they said, "Don't mess with the black president." When you don't mess with black leaders in high places, we are in a difficult situation. We gotta deal with it, because if we don't... Now, I'm gonna say this, and then I'm gonna run out of here. But one of the good things about having Trump is all y'all are angry. If you would have had somebody else, you would have thought you made progress, and you would have been cool. This fool is disrupting the whole world. Everybody's angry with him. So, it provides more emphasis for the movement. If Hillary would have been elected, y'all would have been saying, "Wow, we got a woman elected." You'd have thought you had some progress, and you would want to sleep. Capitalism is predatory, and if you go for what they call the compassionate capitalism, that's an oxymoron, but compassionate capitalism is you get a $15 minimum wage and some food stamps. Compassionate capitalism is you get a few jobs and a few programs for your community, but it still provides the impetus for the rich. It still exploits, but like Malcolm said, you suffer peacefully because you have the wrong people in power. I have more to say later, but stay ready for the revolution, because that's the only solution.
I just want to make sure we still on the air. Roll call, WBAI, we good? WPFW, we good? We still on? Sirius XM, we good? C-SPAN, I see a red light on C-SPAN, they good, all right. Amen. I'm mischievous. Somebody once asked me to, in an interview, you know, "Mark, what do you think about the most... What do you think about the most powerful political couple in American history?" And they thought I was gonna talk about half of the couple he just mentioned. And I said, "You mean Charles Nynez Barron?" What does gentrification look like to you and your community and the institutions you serve? Amen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I bring you greetings from Jackson, Mississippi.
Amen.
On behalf of Mayor Choquay Lomumba.
Yeah.
And I'd like to say that he is not one of those Negro politicians that we've referenced Mississippi and Jackson, we're in the process of rebuilding. We're in the process of rebuilding a city that has been exploited and divested in for decades, even with black leadership. But we under... So, even though we don't face gentrification the way many of our other urban areas are facing it, we understand that as soon as we rebuild it, we will have to address it. Our mayor often makes the statement that we will not move our people from one state of misery to another. And that's essentially what gentrification is. Our commitment to our people is involve them in their government. Our commitment is to design our economy, which we call a dignity economy, meaning that every single citizen in Jackson, Mississippi deserves to be treated with dignity and respect, regardless of their economic status, their social status, their level of education. We are committed to building a just society for all human beings.
Yeah.
And in building that just society, we understand the relationship that we as proprietors, as elected officials, the role that we have to serve. We have to serve the role of servant leadership. We are servants.
Yeah.
We are servants of the people. We understand that so often, we don't listen, especially when we have, when we get elected or we have the doctors, you know, the letters behind our names. We often think that we have the solutions. We have come to understand that we cannot craft solutions unless we craft them in concert with the people who put us in office. So, as we build, as we build, we constantly touch bases with our citizens. We have what we call people's assemblies, where we go out, when we're getting ready to do something within the city, we go out and we say, "What do you think about this? And if you agree with this, how should it be structured? What's the best way this will affect you?" We're implementing participatory budgeting to help citizens understand, because they see millions of dollars in the budget, and they don't understand how that money is allocated or how it is used. We want them to understand the budget so they can make meaningful input into how their tax dollars are being used within the city of Jackson. So, I don't want to go over my three to four minutes. I just want to say, for those of you who are not aware, our current mayor is the son of Choquay Lomumba, the revolutionary attorney and member of the New African Independence Movement. Free the land.
Show of hands.
Free the land. Free the land. All right, all right. And his father made a statement, his father was elected as mayor in Jackson in 2013. He died, he passed on in, after 10 months in office. During his campaign, he made the statement that we all, in our administration, hold very dearly. If you don't love the people, you will eventually betray the people. We have to put people in office who love the people.
That's right, that's right.
And we have to hold them accountable, because power is seductive. Power is very seductive. So, we have to make sure that those of us who love the people, that we elevate to these positions of servant leadership, are held accountable, held close to us, so that that love can continue and we can craft freedom and self-determination together. Thank you.
All right.
Free the land. Free the land.
Choquay, again, his father, Ashay, brother Choquay Lomumba, his son said to me that we can take Mississippi back. The black folk can govern, and just like the sister tried to do in Georgia, we can take Mississippi back, all right? Please, gentrification from your perspective.
Well, thank you all so much for having me here. My name is Ellen Lee. I'm here on behalf of Mayor Latoya Cantrell of New Orleans, the first female mayor of the great city of New Orleans.
Amen.
100-year history. She is amazing. She is a community organizer. That's her roots. The work that she did in her neighborhood after Katrina, organizing that community, fighting for resources to bring that neighborhood back. It was one of the neighborhoods that those planners said would not be able to rebuild. You're too low-lying, you have too much water in your neighborhood, and she said, "I'll be doggone if that's gonna happen, not today." And organize so that that neighborhood would come back, that the people of New Orleans would be able to come back and live where they choose to live and not where someone else tells them to live. I just must say that I'm also a lifelong New Orleanian. I have seen the changes that have happened. I live in the Tremay neighborhood in New Orleans. When I was growing up, a lot of vacancy, a lot of blight, house prices, nothing like they are today. My 92-year-old mother still lives in the house that we grew up in. And when she tells me that prices in that neighborhood, and I know some of y'all on the East Coast, this is nothing, $250,000, $300,000 for a house in the neighborhood I grew up in, I can't believe it.
Right.
But I tell her, first of all, do not open the door when people come knocking. And the second thing is, we are not selling the homestead. That is the homestead, and we're holding on to that land.
That's right.
But for us, gentrification looks like families who, at the wages they're currently making, have to work over 100 hours a week, would have to work over 100 hours a week to be able to afford living in New Orleans. It means that if you're not making that minimum wage, what you would need to be making is $22 to $25 an hour to be able to afford to live in New Orleans. And for those of you who have been there and come and experienced our wonderful hospitality, our food and music, like in the joie de vie, like no place else, really, with all due respect to my folks here, but like no place else, it don't pay $22 an hour or $25 an hour. And so, imagine the hardship on people. Downtown in New Orleans is, I lived there my whole life, I have never seen downtowns being developed in the way that it has. Nothing affordable, very little affordability in downtown where people could be actually close to the jobs that they have. But we didn't have policies in place to make that happen when we were trying to rebuild after Katrina. Katrina, which accelerated the gentrification in New Orleans, and because as government officials, we have to take responsibility for our part in doing that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we have to hold ourselves accountable for the role that we played in that. So, what that also means for us is that people are being pushed out from the inner city and other parts of our city into the outer areas of the city. That would be, that's not cool, but it might be all right if we had great public transportation to get people there. It might be all right if we had other services in those areas. So, that's what that's looking like for us. That means our service economy is being compromised. If I can't get to work and I'm an hourly worker, then now I'm in trouble when my bus is late, and I may lose my job because my bus is late. It's the things like that. It means for us, literally, our culture. So, when our musicians and our artisans cannot afford to live in the city that they create, we got a problem.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll talk about what we're doing, but that's what gentrification looks like in New Orleans.
Amen, thank you, thank you. She mentioned a black woman mayor in New Orleans, amen? And we just had another one in Chicago, didn't we? So, the sister's coming on strong. Okay, brother, please.
I left New Jersey in 2012 and said I was going to Georgia, specifically Atlanta, I was gonna be quiet, I was not gonna get involved in fights and all this stuff, and I was gonna enjoy my life. And sure enough, nothing changed. And I have discovered that the problem of gentrification and some other evils which blacks face are intentional, they're deliberate, they're planned. And so, when you ask what it looks like in Atlanta, they just built Mercedes-Benz Stadium, hosted the Super Bowl on the west side of the city. Gleaming, beautiful structure. The west side of Atlanta, heavily low income, unemployment high, people are struggling. It's also where the AU Center is located. There is a Herculean fight now because developers want to take over the west side of Atlanta, and their intent is to move out the population that lives there now. And so, we're in one, I almost said something else, heck of a fight to keep that from happening. And it wouldn't have been so bad if it was just there. But we just finished a major fight because the state of Georgia had the audacity to think they were gonna take control of Atlanta's airport. Atlanta's airport is the busiest airport in the world. Atlanta is a mecca for blacks because of the Atlanta Airport. Maynard Jackson, with development of Atlanta Airport, he's the one who made Atlanta the hub that it is. And so, Atlanta is a major hub and mecca for black life. It has $34 billion of revenue generated. Black businesses thrive in the city of Atlanta. Their attempt to take over Atlanta Airport has nothing to do with corruption. It's about getting their filthy hands on $34 billion. It's about dismantling the black middle class. And Assemblyman Barron, I wish I could say what's happening in New York was happening in Atlanta, but the white population of Atlanta is increasing. Black population of Atlanta is decreasing. And so, when you ask what gentrification requires to be defeated, as I said in New Jersey, I say again, nothing changes without pressure. Black folk have got to fight for something, and I think protecting our race is worth fighting for. And so, I'm a firm believer that we've got to apply heat, but let me also say, I'm a firm believer, y'all also have to provide light. There are folk who do not want our people to see what's happening to us. And that's why it's important among black leadership that we have some black leadership that has some character and some backbone, because we've got to help our people to see what's happening to us. And so, if you ask me what our biggest challenge is, our challenge is to help our people to see.
Please, my brother.
I'm gonna talk about gentrification broadly, and it's important for us to remember that gentrification is a process that's been at least more than 30 years in the making. Gentrification is a process that includes disinvestment, reinvestment, and displacement. Now, historically, we know about displacement. I'm Jeffrey Lowe. I was introduced earlier. I'm a professor at Texas Southern University in urban planning and environmental policy. Now, that disinvestment is based on years of segregation and lack of resources, redlining, blockbusting, and we know who benefited, and they didn't like, look like us. It's based on white supremacy and racism. What is different with the reinvestment from the past is that it is global. It is global capitalism. We have Brazilians, Asians, people from all over the world. They do not hold our values. They are not concerned about our improvement of quality of life. It is all grounded in capitalism, and all they're concerned about is making a dollar. You cannot, and I'm talking globally, in most of our communities, you cannot go into, talk about gentrification, for example, in Harlem or Morning talk about gentrification, for example, in Harlem or Morningside Heights, and not talk about white people who can no longer live on the Upper West Side. They're being pushed out, and they're pushing us out, right? And it's all about making the well-to-do more wealthier, and it is global. And it is global. And so the displacement that we see happening, living in communities where housing value across the country and most black communities is now four and five times higher than it's ever been, right? It is because of that global investment. And our public officials are letting it happen. Our black middle class are letting it happen. And we have to hold ourselves accountable, we're complicit in it because we didn't keep pressure on them or put pressure on them to do anything different. And until we put that pressure on them and make the policy changes, and it's global, that's the emergency that we're talking about, and that's the emergency that we need to address and take immediate action.
All right. And just to be clear, everybody, please reintroduce yourself as we go down.
Just so everybody's clear, Willie Barney from Omaha, Nebraska. All the way from Omaha, center of the country, came out here to Newark, and I want to share a couple things with you. The first one, the name of our organization is the African-American Empowerment Network. And a lot of people get twisted when I say empowerment. Let me tell you, empowerment is not giving someone power. Empowerment is helping them to realize they had the power the whole time, right? And so if you have that power, then the second word that we have focused on is collaboration. And in order to spell that out, Dr. King talked about living on a lonely island of poverty in the midst of a vast ocean of material prosperity. And if you go city by city by city, that's what we have been living in. So in the city of Omaha, what's happening? In 2006, when we started, we had a 49% graduation rate for African-Americans. We had a crime rate that was going out of control at the highest level ever. So we collaborated. We brought African-American leaders from every sector together, and we developed our own plan. That plan then brought together hundreds and then thousands of people to develop a revitalization plan from the community, from the grassroots level. We developed our own plan, and we put it into action. We took the community-based plan, took it to the city council, and was able to get a unanimous vote to approve that plan. It is now the master plan, but it was developed by the community for the community. That's the first step. The other thing is, in process of working in collaboration, we have been able to address some of the long-term issues that had been four decades in the making. So we were able to reduce gun violence by 80% in this area that we've been focusing on, 80%. We took the graduation rate that was 49%, it's now at 81%. So we're moving the dial. The other thing is, the unemployment rate was 25%. We've been able to bring it down to 7%. It's not where it needs to be, but we are reversing those trends. Now we come to the third word, which is ownership. And we must be in a position to own. So we are building strategies and redeveloping our cultural arts and cultural entertainment and business districts with the focus on owning the land along those corridors with our partners. And when I say "we," it is a collaboration of over 500 organizations, including the pastors, the neighborhood groups, community-based organizations. We meet every month to strategize on how we are empowered to change our own community. And that's what we're focusing on in the city of Omaha.
I'm Sister Frederica Bay from Women in Support of the Million Man March and the New Jersey Coalition for Due Process of Law.
Hold on to your chairs now.
No, 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 I just, I am just feeling James Brown good. You know, I'm feeling James Brown good, being in the midst of all of these powerful minds, you know, that have come together for one purpose, and that is to get back our stuff. What Malcolm said, he said it best, the foxes still doing what? Guarding over the hen house. The foxes still guarding over the hen house. Now, Dr. Jeffries, Dr. Roslin can say, when they came and touched the mansion, my daughter Amina, the mayor, we came back from the Million Man March on fire. Our chairman led us down there. Over 50,000 men from New Jersey, the Wall Street Journal said, right Larry? Went to Washington DC from Newark, from New Jersey. And when we came back, we were on fire. And as Dr. Malvo said, we came back and we built a few things. And we had property, and we taught children math and science. Dr. Roslin wrote the curriculum, you understand. And what did the folks do from the Board of Education in Newark? What did Chris Christie do, okay? And who owns that property today is Audible, that's owned by Amazon. They own that prime property Dr. Jeffries talked about right now. And so we know who the foxes are, and New Jersey is New Jersey. The judges are the foxes and complicit. You go to the court, or you don't even get to the court. You know, Wells Fargo, Ed Al, Bank of America, you name it. So we know what happened in 2008. 2008 was the stock market crash. They were bailed out. And some folks said that they had to be bailed out. I don't know, I'm not a politician. I know we were bailed on. I know who benefited from that, and it wasn't me and you. Okay, so in New Jersey, foreclosure, that's what gentrification looks like. That's what Dr. Daniels talked about, the Negro removal program of the 21st century is, you know? And so the problem. The problem is predatory mortgages. The problem is fraud. Slavery was a fraud, okay? And so what we are asking for and what we deserve, black folks gave Governor Murphy, Philip Dunston Murphy, 95% of our vote. We should not have to ask for 10 months after a moratorium on foreclosures. And that's what we've been doing, a moratorium, that's right, thank you very much, on foreclosures. We thank God for Assemblywoman Cleopatra Tucker. We have a bill, that's right, we have a bill, 3119, that she issued and put in. And before her, the sitting Lieutenant Governor, Sheila Oliver, she put the first bill in for the moratorium on foreclosures. Now, she said, we know Chris Christie will not sign it. But the elected officials didn't tell us that Dunston wouldn't sign it either, but the reality is, the reality is, he came from Wall Street, you know? But I believe our elected officials, okay, we're gonna give him a chance. Now, he needs to believe us and write that, and issue that moratorium on foreclosures, Mayor Baraka, that should have been issued on the first request. Because New Jersey is number one in foreclosures in the nation for how many years in a row? One, no, two, three years in a row. The state of New Jersey. So we know what the problem is. The problem is the banks defrauding toxic mortgages and taking our stuff after they've been paid. The insurance have already paid these banks. We don't owe them nothing. If we had a HUD loan, HUD already paid these mortgages. And then what they've done is they bundled them, sell them all over the world, make trillions of dollars, then give themselves raises and take a foreclosure on our house. And what makes it so insidious is that it's shameful for black folks. You know what I mean? I mean, we've owned our houses, we play by the rules, we pay our taxes, we pay our mortgages. And 2008 was created, they created this fraud. They, right, they created it. So they get the benefit of mortgages that are already paid for by the insurance, by HUD, they resell them for trillions of dollars, and then take our homes fraudulently. We go to the court, and we present evidence-based documents that says, this is the law, all we want you to do is uphold it. No due process of law.
Nothing.
So what we've asked, what we're asking for is very simple. We're asking for an executive order for a moratorium on foreclosures in the state of New Jersey to stop the bleeding. Assemblywoman Cleopatra Tucker's Assembly Bill, 3119, for the moratorium on foreclosures, and we need you to support us on this, all y'all. And lastly, we're tax-paying voting citizens that play by the rules. And we were defrauded as a result of the 2008 market crash, when banks were bailed out, homeowners were preyed on with predatory toxic mortgages that continue to disproportionately devastate our community. So the solutions is the moratorium on foreclosures, the executive order by Governor Murphy, which he received 95% of our vote, and we should not, we have been bought and paid for, like Maya Angelou said, we don't beg for nothing, absolutely. So we need our elected officials, our clergy and community, to call out the foxes that continue to guard over the hen house, black and white, and all in between. Foreclosures are at the very heart of the Negro removal program of the 21st century. And our hope is that the solutions to foreclosures are included in IBW's Marshall Plan and the Model Cities Initiative as vehicles to revitalize marginalized communities. So I just want to thank Mayor Baraka, because we meet at Newark City Hall every first and third Thursday. Our next meeting is the 18th of April 2019. Thanks to Council President Mildred Crump and Mayor Baraka. I want to again thank our Chairman Larry Hamm for putting us on fire when we came back. And all of the brothers who went to the Million Man March, just stand and raise your hand because you inspired us so very much. Give them a warm round of applause. We love y'all. We love y'all, and my daughter Amina Bay, love you, love you, love you much, all right? But we can do this, y'all. We can do this, we've done it before. Harriet showed us how. All right. Thank you so much.
And again, for radio, thank you, Sister Frederica, give her a round of applause. Again, for radio, each panelist, please reintroduce yourself. Pass the mic.
God bless everybody. My name is Michael McBride. I'm National Director of the Live Free Campaign. I am from Oakland, California, home of the Black Panther Party for Self-Defense. I say "all power," you say "to the people," all power. All power?
To the people.
When I say "all power," you say "to the people," all power. All power. All right, all right. And I also gotta add, we also the home of the soon-to-be three-time NBA champions, Golden State Warriors. God bless y'all. All power. Oh, no. Three ways that gentrification... We've been a long time coming. Somebody say "amen," all right? Three ways the gentrification has impacted us in the Bay Area. The first way, the rise of the tech industry. The influx of tech companies into the Bay Area has created a massive displacement of working-class, black people, brown people, even middle-class, poor white folk. If you are not a millionaire, literally, you cannot afford to buy a home in the city where I was born and raised, San Francisco. The rent is too damn high. Somebody say "amen." You know, when a preacher cussing, we in trouble. Somebody say "amen," right? $3,500 a month for a one-bedroom, $3,000 for a studio apartment. Now, in Oakland, $2,500 for a one-bedroom apartment. Rise of the tech industry has created such wealth inequality that literally no one can afford to live there. If you did not have an apartment or a home before 2012, you cannot come into Oakland, San Francisco, or the Bay Area without at least $120,000 income, two-working or single-income, and afford apartments. Certainly can't buy no home. Rise of the tech industry. Second way it shows up, the failure of governance by racist white progressives. Everything I learned about white supremacy, I learned from white progressive people. I want you to hear me now.
You can break that down, brother. Seriously, you need to spend a minute there. Please, spend a minute there.
The reason the things in the Bay Area are the way they are is not because of the Tea Party. Progressives have governed the Bay Area for decades. Black elected officials who lack imagination and courage, who do not feel like they can center a black political agenda and win a progressive political coalition are the reasons why gentrification is running rampant. I'm just talking about the Bay Area, I can't talk about y'all. Somebody say "amen." Weak black religious institutions and cultural organizations who forgot that we the original people of the earth and would rather serve a blond-haired, blue-eyed Jesus than the dark-skinned Palestinian Jew who was born in a hood called Nazareth, unjustly arrested by the criminal justice system of his day, and executed by the empire. That Jesus, somebody say "that Jesus."
That Jesus.
They don't know who that Jesus is. And the third way gentrification shows up is the mass criminalization of black people by law enforcement agencies under the guise of public safety, who continue to grow their police budgets even when crime is dropping. So I tell folk all the time, the progressives are not the champions of black political or black people. Now, they ain't better than Donald Trump, somebody say "amen." So we not dumb up in here. Thank you, Dr. Daniels, he walked me off a ledge one time because I was ready to blow this thing up. So we got to sequence our fights, but we should not be under any illusion that white progressives are our friends. Ferguson was not under the control of Republicans. Missouri, the state who ordered the National Guard and cracked all of our heads on the ground, was not a Republican governor. The Department of Justice, who I worked with before Michael Brown was killed and after, but in a different kind of way, still could not convict cops who killed unarmed black people. And even our beloved president still pulled out language like thugs to describe the young people in Baltimore. So we have to have an agenda and a vision that is clear about who our enemies are and how we will... and how we will further. And I'll talk about our solutions on the next Go Run.
Alright. Now, Rem Yerri. Pass the mic already preached now, so... I need you to be a little more brief and a little more humble.
You said three to four minutes. I'm going to try to put this in a quick context. One, we... I'm Todd Yerri, Senior Vice President of the Rainbow Push Coalition. Certainly, I bring you greetings from the Reverend Jesse Lewis Jackson, Sr., who at... You ought to at least appreciate his effort, because at almost 78 years old and publicly acknowledging that he has been diagnosed with Parkinson's, he still does far more than most of us in this room. So at least thank God that he's still doing something for all y'all and all us up in here. Alright. So let's talk about gentrification, because we keep throwing it around like it's a name. It's a system. Gentrification, I define it as proprietary spatial control of black people established by law, sustained by force. The reason it is established by law is because the law is not about morals, it's about rules. And so we bring our value system to the table, and we plead with the plantation owner, "Do the right thing." But "do the right thing" is a Spike Lee joint. It's not a political philosophy. So we have been to tag another Spike Lee joint, but Brother Malcolm's reminder, we been bamboozled. And so in order to be ourselves, we think as black people, we got to put on black face to become acceptable, and then when white people put on black face, we too stupid to be outraged, as if somehow or other, they can make it acceptable at any time in history that the mockery and ridiculing and caricaturing of black people is somehow acceptable. Here's what I will say gentrification looks like where I pastor in Baltimore City. It's not the home of the wire. It's the birthplace of Thurgood Marshall. It's the home of Perrin Mitchell. Calhoun, one of the finest arts districts to be found outside of Harlem, New York, running right down Pennsylvania Avenue. Our problem with gentrification is that it looks like a bad attempt to play Monopoly by checkers' rules. Any Monopoly players in the room? Alright. I'm going to see how much y'all know about Monopoly. Everybody knows the last two pieces of property that you can own before you pass go. And they are Boardwalk and Park Place. I'm going to see what else you know. How many of you know the first two places after you pass go and collect your $200 paycheck? Baltic and Mediterranean Avenue. Now, while we are picking pieces, trying to figure out who's going to be the thimble, the dog, the cat, the cannon, the most important player in Monopoly is the bank. Because the banker controls the money, and if you've ever played Monopoly where it went too long, once you run out of money, the banker can then print more money. Y'all ain't talking back to me to keep the game going. So now the process kind of flows like this. Some of us want to just live long enough to escape trespassing on Park Place and Boardwalk so we can get our check. We ignore Baltic and Mediterranean until we get up in a jam, hope we land on Chance or Community Chests, because we may need a get-out-of-jail-free card or some help with the light bill. And the hustle goes something like this. Just yesterday in Baltimore City, our city solicitor filed a class-action lawsuit against the banks on behalf of the citizens of Baltimore, because even in their negotiating of bond rates, Mayor, they found out that they had scaled the cost of the bonds to majority-black jurisdictions. Gentrification is not a thing that just happens. It is a proprietary right, and it's grounded in the one case that started property law in the first place, and then I'll leave it alone. Property law in the United States was established by a case called Johnson v. McIntosh, or Mentosh, depending on how you may have studied it. There was a transaction where the indigenous people had transferred a piece of property to someone absent a piece of paper called a deed. There was another transaction about the same piece of property, but because there was paper attached to it, there was a fight over who rightly owned it. When the court made a determination of who had the legal interest in the parcel, they argued that the deed, because it was established by rules, not morals, had determined that the second buyer was actually the legitimate owner. And the second owner could then claim it, because here it is in the ruling, "The right of conquest inherited by this country tied to its birthright from England" allowed that the arbitrary establishment of rules to spatially control land and therefore the people on it, because if you're not on the property with permission and you don't own it, you're trespassing, has now led to a system where now gentrification is keeping you negroes in the side of town where you supposed to stay, because if you get caught on Park Place or Boardwalk without permission, your ass going to jail.
Who's that down there on the end? Somebody y'all know? Does somebody y'all know? Does he look familiar?
Power to the people. Is it on? Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's on, Doctor.
When we begin a discussion about gentrification, I think it's important that we examine the etymology of the word. What is the root word of gentrification? Gentry. Who was the gentry? The gentry was the English word for the emerging bourgeoisie in England. The bourgeoisie was the middle class. The word gentry was used interchangeably for landowners, but it was also used for the nascent capitalists that was developing. So we see in the word gentrification, its class nature. And another way of describing gentrification is class warfare. It is the warfare of the rich against the poor. Another way of describing gentrification is ethnic cleansing. It is the removal of primarily black and brown people from their communities, and they are replaced by other people, and in this period, mostly white people. What does gentrification look like? Gentrification is like when you go away to college for four years and you come back home and you can't recognize your community. Gentrification is when multimillion-dollar sports stadiums are built in the downtown area subsidized by people's tax dollars. Gentrification is when sparkling, performing arts centers are constructed on the cemeteries of our slave ancestors, as they are here in Newark, New Jersey. Cemeteries so old that nobody remembers that they were even there. Gentrification is when the name of the city is taken off a facility and a corporate name is put on the facility. When I went to Philadelphia, even the subway stations had Wells Fargo's name on them. Gentrification is when you live in the hood and all of a sudden, blocks and blocks of the hood are replaced by condominiums, townhouses that the people who live in the neighborhood can't afford to live in. Gentrification is when those townhouses and communities have gates and walls put around them so that the people who used to live there can't even walk through the community. Gentrification is when the schools you went to were public schools, now they're closed and replaced with charter schools. Gentrification...
Come on, come on.
Gentrification is when you went to the ShopRite, and now they closed the ShopRite, and you got Whole Foods. That's gentrification. Gentrification is when you're paying more than one-half, maybe even two-thirds of your take-home pay to rent. Rent should not be more than 25% of our income. It is so fitting that we have a forum here in Newark, New Jersey on gentrification.
Yeah.
Because Newark is the historical home of the longest, largest rent strike in the history of the United States.
What happened?
In 1971, a brother named Toby Henry organized the people of the Stella Wright Project to withhold their money until the elevators worked again, the lights were put back on, the urine was cleaned up in the stairwells, the apartments were painted the way, and the lead paint was removed from those apartments. That rent strike lasted over one year. And if you want to know the most powerful weapon to fight gentrification is tenant organizing and people organizing to fight gentrification. How do we fight gentrification? Well, you have to start from the right perspective. And what is the right perspective? That housing is not a commodity simply to be bought and sold in the marketplace. Housing is a human right for all people. All people have a right to decent housing and affordable housing. How do we fight? Well, and I agree with Charles Barron that we need a revolutionary transformation. Yesterday was the anniversary of the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King. And if you read Dr. King's fifth book, "Where Do We Go From Here: Chaos or Community", in the chapter called "The World House," Dr. King says what? He says we need a radical redistribution of power and wealth in the United States, and he goes on to say, "We need a radical transformation of our socioeconomic system." That's a fancy way for saying, "We need a revolution." So we need a revolution, but it's going to take us a while to get to the revolution. In the interim, we must fight for short-term reforms. Now, I know a lot of you middle-class people in here don't care about Section 8, but a whole lot of our people get Section 8 subsidies. And right now, Donald Trump, through his puppet, Ben Carson, is trying to significantly slash the Section 8 program. We must fight against any budget cuts in public housing and against the Section 8 program. Furthermore, furthermore, we can't really deal adequately with this problem unless we get rid of the right-wing dictatorship that currently occupies the White House and the Congress of the United States. Those are interim things that we have to fight for. We have to fight for housing, for tenant rights. In Washington State, every town should have rent control. But in Washington State, they just passed a law for statewide rent control. We need to fight for that statewide rent control in every state where our people are. Now, I know some people don't like to hear this, because it means we have to intervene in the economic system. We have to intervene in the capitalist system. But I'm down with Brother Malcolm X. What did Malcolm X say? "Find me a capitalist, and I'll find you a bloodsucker." What did Malcolm X say? That capitalism cannot exist without racism. And racism and capitalism are the two main forces that are driving gentrification. And let me finish up. As the brother said, gentrification didn't just start. Contemporary gentrification started after the uprisings of the 1960s. That's when it started. Gentrification was when they ran the interstate highway through the black community and removed half the black community. Gentrification was when they ran 78 through the South Ward. Gentrification was when they ran 280 through the South Ward. Gentrification is when they tore down half of the Black Central Ward to build the University Hospital. That's when it goes back. But how do we fight gentrification? As Brother Barron said, we need to elect revolutionary elected officials. But I tell you this, we need to build revolutionary organizations to hold those elected officials accountable. We just laid Ken Gibson to rest, but Ken Gibson came out of a process. Two weeks after the uprising of 1967, there was a Black Power Conference in Newark, New Jersey. A year after that, there was a Black Power Convention at West Kenny Junior High School. A year after that, there was the Black and Puerto Rican Convention of 1970. And out of that came the Communities Choice Team, and Ken Gibson was the mayor and got elected mayor. That was Black Power. We need to go back to this convention process like we did in Gary in 1972. We need a black political agenda that includes a fight against gentrification and an economic bill of rights for a living wage, for housing as a human right, for health care for all, for end to student debt, and free tuition. Power to the people.
Alright. So, everybody okay? National Town Hall meeting on gentrification on WBAI, WPFW, Sirius XM, Progress, and C-SPAN. Alright, solutions. And then we're going to bring our mayor forward, solutions. I'm going to call on Dr. Daniels, request several individuals to talk about solutions. They are implementing solutions that are working. First of all, from Texas Southern again, Dr. Jeffrey Lo. Talk to us, if you would, about some solutions.
Solutions. And let me bring this to the spirit of process and public policy. And I would like to talk about this in a spirit of process and policy. And being in New Jersey...
Three minutes, by the way.
Oh, three minutes?
Let me just reiterate.
Alright, I'll be quick. I'll be quick. Given the level of corporate and global capital that's driving gentrification, and they're really reconfiguring and redeveloping urban space, alright? Because that's where they can maximize, not only absorb capital, but maximize it. It's greed. It's greed. And I believe that many of the solutions have to be outside the realm. We need to begin to think of solutions outside the realm of capitalism. We need to begin to think of solutions outside the realm of capitalism, right? We need to begin to think about ownership and wealth from less than an individual perspective to a collective perspective. In this part of the country, we have cooperatives. In many parts of the country, in many black communities, we do not. They don't know what co-ops are. They haven't implemented them. They're not familiar with community land trust. These are institutions that not only move us closer to the availability of affordable housing, and hopefully, in this country, housing as a right, but they also build democracy, right? Because in the process, it's collectively owned and controlled. So that's, that's one way. And what that requires, when we think about our culture, and I'm going to bring the church in this for a moment.
Quickly, please.
We need to begin to think about what stewardship really means, right? We have a responsibility, not just to ourselves, but to the generations that are coming after us to make it better. And finally, because this is an emergency, I believe that we need to go back and demand, and collectively demand, from our local governments, because this can happen at the local level, that we demand that any time a development is happening in our communities and cities, there must be a racial assessment, a racial impact assessment that happens. Already, we have an environmental impact assessment that's required for anything that has federal money. And in most places, in most local places, before they do development, an environmental impact assessment happens. We need to do the same thing and ensure the same thing happens in our communities to ensure that any development that happens makes it better for those of us who are already in our communities.
Thank you. Dr. Jeffrey Lo, Texas Southern. Next, solutions from the Director of Community Economic Development from the City of New Orleans, Ellen Lee, please.
Hi, thanks. I'll say a couple of things that our mayor is fighting for. We talk about fair share, hashtag fair share. And so I'll give a couple of examples. So when our New Orleans economy is, when our New Orleans economy is still largely dependent on tourism, we need our hashtag fair share of the revenue that's generated from that industry so that we can support and invest in our neighborhoods and our people. If our, if we are renewing a tax, an existing tax, that is disproportionately benefiting one institution, we need our hashtag fair share to distribute that same tax in a new way that provides resources to take care of our parks and our recreation centers in all parts of the city. So that even for people who don't want to live downtown, they still have the quality of parks and facilities that give them that same quality of life. And when developers, if they don't want to have affordable housing in their communities, that's not cool, but I need, we need our hashtag fair share of other resources that you're paying into our Affordable Housing Trust Fund so that we can build that affordable housing in other ways, in other places in our city. That's some of the things our mayor is working on. We need our hashtag fair share of DBE participation. We need our hashtag fair share of local hires. So when you want to come in this town and do business, you have to hire our local people. You have to procure goods and services from our minority businesses. That's what Mayor Latoya Cantrell is working on, finding solutions.
Um, thank you, Ellen Lee. Willie Barney, African American Empowerment Network, Omaha. Solutions, quickly, please.
Very quickly, one of the things, somebody say, "We are empowered."
We are empowered.
A little bit louder, "We are empowered."
We are empowered.
And the reason I wanted to hit that is, based on what I understand about what you're doing right now in the city, the mayor is opening up doors for land contracts and other work. Other cities don't have that. So you have a mayor and administration that's opening up the door, but now we have to walk through it collectively together, right? And so he talked about collective investment and ownership. You have land in the community right now, based on what I'm understanding, that can be purchased if you work on it collectively and you can have a co-op. You can have collective ownership. And that's what we're focusing on now in Omaha, is we have specific strategic lots and buildings where we have worked with our collective partners to make sure that 70% of that is under the, in good hands, that we can work with to make sure there's collective ownership. That's one piece. The other thing is, all the different sectors, I'm looking around this room. This is a powerful room. If just the people in this room were to agree and come up with, like we did, a common agenda that was developed by the community for the community, there is no stopping what you can get done with the mayor that you have in place right now. So I'd say, first of all, you are empowered. You have the power to make the change, but you have to be collaborative, collective, and comprehensive. But develop your plan and go make it happen.
Alright, alright. Thank you, my brother. Dr. Sophia Omari, Chief of Staff, Mayor Chalkway, Antara Lomuma, Jackson, Mississippi, please. Jackson.
Solutions. Solutions. As I said earlier, I want to focus on us not electing people who just look like us, but people who think like us and people who love us, right? Also, we want to focus on, and this word is being said so much, collective work and responsibility, right? Ujima, collective work and responsibility. As servant leaders, we should not design and defend, but we should design and concert with our brothers and sisters, right? And I also want to talk about another principle that we're trying to implement and make sure happens in Jackson, Mississippi. As a part of the New African Creed, we talk about believing in community as family, right? Believing in the family and in the community, and then believing in the community as family. And we used to live like that, right? We used to lend a hand to our neighbors when they were in need. We used to collectively work to build that barn. You know, we used to come to our neighbor's aides when there were fires and things like that. And now we get behind our locked doors and we act as if we don't know each other. That has to change. We have to build collectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sophia Omari. State of Zimmerman, Charles Barron, solutions.
Uh, solutions, I want to suggest that we do this like we did in East New York. We started an organization called Operation Power. People organizing and working for empowerment and respect to the masses, the people that make history and revolution. And what we did is we challenged the entire Democratic Party club because those Democratic Party clubs control every black community in East New York, in New York City. So what we did, not only did we win the city council seat, we also won the assembly seat, we won the female leadership, the male leadership. We control a community board. We also control the judicial delegates. We control the local judge from that area. All came out of Operation Power. And because we did that, our first solution was the infrastructure. I kid you not, you got to come to East New York. Do we have, do we have foreclosures? Yes. Do we have crime? Yes. We got three new $100 million schools built in East New York, three new ones. We also got a $15 million state-of-the-art, two-story youth center. And we got our group Man Up Inc., Brother A.T. Mitchell, running the youth center, put pressure on the mayor to give us $400,000 a year to run it. We have a new $36 million library coming into East New York, and they're building it in the area where there were some enslaved Africans buried years ago and are already built over it. So we told them, "Two stories on top of the library. We want a cultural museum to honor our African people, and we're going to get it." We also was able to get a whole, what do you call them things, with a shop, shopping mall, right? And one of them malls, they tried to bring in, what's that place? Walmart. They tried to bring in Walmart. They said, "Charles, you're not going to stop Walmart. Operation Power stopped Walmart." They said, "Get out of here." And we got a brother from East New York who has space in there, and he has a wrestling baron called Fusion East. And he was able to get that because we had a movement that demanded that. We also made sure that in all of our schools, we got libraries fixed up, we got computer labs, science labs, recording studios. In our schools, recording studios, $500,000. And in East New York, where could you go and get a new apartment, one-bedroom apartment, making $16,000 to $25,000 a year for $550 a month rent in East New York?
Alright.
That's a solution.
Solutions, moving quickly. Remiri.
Very quickly, a couple of things that I think we, we need to look at, and I don't see the mayor, but to the electeds. As opportunity zones, oh, there is. As opportunity zones are expanded, make sure that there's the full application of the utility of Section 3 under the HUD Act. Because it allows for either recipients of public assistance vouchers or those who live in an area where there are, there's public housing and the income fits that you can actually use the voucher to help with establishing equity. Say that again. So remember Section 3, not just Section 8. We want HUD Section 3 to be fully applied. And then, as it relates to CDBG, once the loan guarantees are paid back, track them when they go into the general fund and make sure that those funds are not redeployed to exclusive projects that you develop uptown as well as downtown so that we can make sure that Baltic Avenue and Mediterranean Avenue have what they need, just like Park Place and Boardwalk.
Alright. Pastor Mike, solutions, quickly, please.
We need to organize, and I'm going to talk primarily to black preachers, religious leaders, organize a public safety agenda beyond policing and prisons. We need to become frontline suppliers, suppliers of frontline public health intervention specialists who can intervene in the conflicts of young people on the streets using public health interventions so we do not have to depend on the police to create peace in our communities. Our churches are strategically located on every block of every black neighborhood in the country. It can serve as an outpost of peacemaking, mental health healing, processing. Black preachers, we have to open up our doors and become public health violence prevention intervention specialists. Organize our congregations to do so. You have great examples, Erika Ford, wave your hand, Erika Ford, with the red-orange on, oh, come on, Erika. She's one of our specialists in this regard. We have people that will help come train you all across the country. That's one solution that we can do. It will decrease police budgets, and we can reinvest the savings from police budgets into housing, into schools, into food, into parks.
Alright, Pastor Mike. Dr. Julian Malvoe, solutions.
Solutions. One of the things from a policy perspective we must focus on is the tax system. We believe we behave as if the tax system just is. And that we have to accept that the tax law that passed in 2017 was a massive transfer of income from the poor to the wealthy. We saw that this year when people didn't get the tax refunds they thought they were going to get. So we're talking about organizing, we really have to organize around changing the tax code, around doing things like taxing stock transfers. That fits, sits on the wealthy almost exclusively because half of us do not have any stock. So there are federal taxes on changing stock transfers. And that will put aside for some kind of community development, that will be something. All too often, we talk about government programs, and then we get into a hearing, and people says, "Well, how are you going to pay for it?" Change the tax code so that the wealthy pay their share. This growing wealth gap is not just a black community issue. Increasingly, we're seeing working-class whites and non-working-class whites looking at a wealth gap. The last recession, we ended up with, the top 10% was 115% better off at the end of the recession. The bottom was 18, 15% worse off at the end of the recession. So I would just implore folks as they do their policy work and talk to their legislators to focus on taxation.
Alright. Dr. Julian Malvoe. Folks, and those were the panelists, Dr. Daniels asked me to share solutions. Please give all of our panelists a round of applause. Don't, don't go anywhere. We were scheduled to have the mayor come forward at 9:30, and we are just, it is 9:31. So we right on time. So as our brother comes forward, and you know, some of the sisters and brothers talked about servant leadership, you know, talked about, you know, and again, he never thought he'd be a mayor. And we didn't, when we were young, we were kids. But a lot of times, even those of us who are black nationalists and revolutionaries, when some of us want to go into public service, some of our own sisters and brothers accuse us of selling out. Let's be real, it's a complicated thing. So it even takes courage to stand up and run for office as a black nationalist and a revolutionary because you're going to get those hits too. But when you do it in the way that Sister Sophia has described, and you serve your people, get up under your people and lift them up, that's what makes all the difference in the world. Please, on your feet for the mayor of the City of Newark, New Jersey, Mayor Roz Baraka.
So, first, I just want to, I want to thank and give honor to Ron Daniels. Let's do that, please. Ron Daniels, who, seriously, because while a lot of us talk a good game, he's been putting in his work for many, many, many years. And many people didn't know, we haven't, we've been having this, this is maybe our second or third time. This is our third time here in the City of Newark and bringing people from all over the country to debate and talk about issues, right? Doesn't mean we necessarily agree all the time, but we have the courage to debate and discuss, right? And that's important. And I heard somebody up here talk about friends and enemies. So it's important, and I said this this morning, it's important for us to understand that, you know, sometimes we may agree with our enemies, but they will always be our enemies. And, and sometimes we're going to disagree with our friends, but we can't treat our friends like our enemies. And I, and I want to use this as a matter of talking about something that my father talked about, which is unity and struggle, right? And so we have to understand that co-entel pro is alive and well, right? And that, and that people will always be planted in places to destroy and disrupt what it is, the work that people are actually trying to do, right? And I'm aware and very clear, clear on that, 100,000%. So at the end of the day, unity and struggle means that we have to have the right to struggle with people and unite around the things on a higher level, right? You can't hang out with racists because you mad at one of your friends. Like, you can't say, "I disagree with you on a policy, and because I disagree with you on a policy, go stand with a racist to be against me because we disagree on policy," right? Now, now you either confused or you work for another entity that has not been revealed. And it, and it needs to be clear, so I want to begin talking about that. And Emma Carl Gabrau said, "Always bear in mind that the people are not fighting for ideas." They're fighting for the things, all the things in anyone's head. They're fighting to win material benefits, to live better and in peace, to see their lives go forward, to guarantee future for their children. And though we're talking about ideas, the fight is over material. And that we have to always understand that we have to have allies, right? We have to have allies. If we fighting a fight without allies, then we fighting a fight we can't win. And that speech came from something called, "Tell no lies, claim no easy victories," right? And so we can't lie. And so we can't lie and act like we winning. There might be some successes we experience here and there, but collectively, we're losing. Collectively, around the country, we're losing, right? And so I don't care who you say you with, and this for, and that for, and that for, we have been losing, right? And so what is the collective strategy to get us out of the condition that we're in, protracted one step, the next step, to the next step, to the next step? And do we have the courage to struggle with one another and begin to unite around the larger issues? And I said this morning that we, there are 10 things that we might, uh, put on a piece of paper. We disagree with number two and number six, and we quit. Or we at odds attacking each other because we can't get together on two and six. Though we agree on eight other things, just those two become the problem and prevent us from organizing and get together. We have to be as sophisticated as the United States Congress, who debate with one another. When it's over, they say it's the law. Now you break the law and see if they come to court and represent you, whether they agree with you or not. The point is, we have to be sophisticated enough to understand that when people are putting things forward, our job is to make those things more effective, not get in the way of it happening, not destroy it, not pull it apart. And everybody up here will have different, you know, this is a great panel up here. Awesome, awesome, awesome panel up here. Awesome. I do wanna say, push back on a few things and talk about a few, uh, things that I think are solutions, right? I don't believe that conditions organize people. People organize people. And though we say that in our sloganeering, it is important to know that everybody up here organizes. And they organize every single day. They organize in good times and in bad times. They organize when the heat is on them and when things are doing great, right? Because you gotta organize when things are great, uh, so that you'll be prepared when things are bad, right? I live in Newark, and so beating people up don't necessarily get them strength, it just get them beat up. And so it's important that we organize people, and organizing takes work. It doesn't take opportunism. You can't go to somebody else's event and try to organize the people coming out of that event because you can't get them to go to yours. Right? You can't, you can't go to somebody else's event to disrupt their event because you can't create an event of your own. Then you have to ask yourself, why can't you get people to come in and listen to you since you got the right line? Since you got the right line and you talking the right stuff, well, why aren't the people following you? And so that, then you have to understand that it takes work to get to that place. It's not gonna happen simply because you getting people angry. I'm not trying to organize people to be angry. I'm trying to organize people to be smart. Anger don't make people organize. Smart, what, their clarity makes them organize. When you clear, you organize. When you angry, you do all kinds of things. Some of those things you do might be in spite of yourself, right? And so it's important for us to be clear on what we're talking about and be clear on what's going on. You can't call yourself an activist and you don't know any. You haven't studied activism. You can't call yourself a revolutionary and you don't know any revolutionaries. You haven't studied revolution. You don't even know that, you haven't read one book about revolution, about the thing that's going, about what's happening, but you running around calling yourself these things. If you wanna be a mathematician, you have to study math. If you wanna be a journalist, you have to study writing. If you wanna be a revolutionary, you gotta study revolution. Now, if you don't, if you haven't studied revolution, then you sitting around making the same mistakes that we made over and over and over again. So you come to meetings and you do things and attack your allies and allow your enemies to go free. And so your enemies, and so, and what happens is once you destroy one another, the enemies come up the middle and they win. And that's been happening to us for centuries. And we haven't been smart enough to learn our, learn what's going on yet. We haven't figured it out yet, right? So, listen, you don't have to agree with everybody in here. You don't. And, and, and uniting with people, your agreement with them shouldn't be a prerequisite for you to unite with them. Anybody who tells you that, in order for you to be with me, you have to agree with everything I say, is narcissist, right? And if they're narcissist, then you shouldn't wanna unite with them anyway. So at the end of the day, all we have to agree to is that the overarching principles, and we can struggle with one another around those things to get to the end goal, right? I don't agree with everybody in my family, but I love them, and we together, right? And if my mother say something, I'm gonna get it done. But at the end of the day, we have to struggle with each other. And struggle is important, is attention that we need. And Ron Daniels talked about, is attention that we need. That struggle is important for us, right? We have to have that struggle, but it has to be based on principle. It can't be based on me trying to get what you got. It can't be based on a personal difference that I have. It can't be based on that I don't like you as an individual. It can't be based on all these other kinda things. Our struggle has to be a principled struggle. And so we talk about self-determination, so I'm glad the sister said collective work and responsibility. 'Cause people want self-determination, they just don't wanna do the work. And they don't wanna have the responsibility. So it's easy to put the responsibility on two people, then criticize the two people because they didn't do exactly what you needed them to do, but you don't, you're not involved in any of it at all. You sit on the back and the side and criticize, but fail to be responsible for the work. You have to get involved in, that's Emma Carl Cabral. Tell no lies, claim no easy victories. That's what that says. You can't have 10 soldiers doing the work of eight. And then the two soldiers on the side complaining about the eight. Damn it, get involved and be a part of the 10 so 10 people can do 10 people's worth of work. That's what needs to happen, right? So we talking about, uh, decades, decades of gentrification that was pointed out that took place years before most of you were even born. Well, some of you. We talking about stuff that began post-World War II, right? When they began to defund or de-invest in these communities, draw circles around them, subsidize people to go to the suburbs, right? Begin to create these roads, as Larry pointed out, so people can get wealth in the community and go out and live in the suburbs at the same time. They purposefully disinvested in these neighborhoods purposely, right? Then they created, uh, these things where they came in and said they're gonna invest in the community to knock land down and left the land barren for years. So you got a bunch of vacant lots that been in your community. You thought they came there yesterday. They been there since 1950.
Yeah, yeah.
Since 1967. They tore whole slots of land down, right? And disinvested in that community. And so now, now there's no wealth in your community. And this whole idea that gentrification has a color is not true. It's not true. It's not true. People, gentrification is a part of a market force that exists in capitalism. Which means that if the, if the low-income housing in Manhattan is $3,000, right? And I've been charging $700 on this side, those people can't afford there are gonna find their way to this side, right? And I can now not charge them 700. I could now charge them 1,700, 1,800, 'cause I can get the rent. That's the market forces that control that, not individuals. The market controls that. And that is a primary function of capitalism. And so our job is to mitigate that. How do you get in, how do you get in the way of that to make sure that that doesn't crush people? That you're not throwing people out? Because guess what? When people say they came back to the community and it looked different, it should look different. Let me tell you why. I grew up, I grew up in Newark, for real, right? We didn't have, there's no, when I came up, there's no even a sit-down restaurant in our neighborhoods. No, not even the ATM where you could get money from. Vacant lots, abandoned buildings, schools that were decrepit, uh, housing that's been outdated for 30, 40 years. It should look different. Things should change, right? But the question is, how do they change? And where do you get the wealth from to change that? I think most of us have been focused on the downtown areas because what happens is, when these cities come back, 'cause they're trending back to the cities, people are saying, I wanna move in the cities 'cause it's hipper, it's next to the train station, all these things. They're trending back, so people are moving downtown. We have to figure out, uh, what do we need to do in our neighborhoods where we live? I don't live downtown. And most of us don't live downtown. And so while we arguing about buildings they're creating downtown, your neighborhood looks a mess. And so what we, what we need to be doing is trying to figure out how to extract wealth to get people to develop the neighborhoods and get minority and young developers to develop those things and own that property at the same time, right? That's what we, so here's a, here's a few things. Here's a few things. I had the pleasure of sitting in a meeting, uh, a week ago with three young African-American men who attend our men's meetings, right? They joined and formed a corporation at the meeting. At the meeting, right? They did it at the meeting. That's empowerment, I don't care what nobody talking about. They did it at the meeting. And then I sat in a meeting with them, and they sat with other developers, big developers, and they identified three or four pieces of parcel that they're gonna develop themselves. But because the city has something in their tax abatement law that says you have to have a minority co-developer, right? Which means that you get equity in the property and not a subcontractor. They sat there at the table as the principal on the property 'cause the other folks could not get the deal done unless they were in the room. And that's the condition that you create. And while you yelling and screaming, those three boys are building in their community, and they're gonna be able to build property in the neighborhoods where they were born and raised, right? And you wanna fight gentrification, own some damn property. The other, the other two, now, and I'm glad I was able to sit in that room, right? The other two pieces is, we bout to cut a ribbon next month for a paper co-op in the city of Newark. A paper co-op, uh, that we identified an African-American brother from the south, uh, in this country, right? Well, the mid-south. We brought him up here called Freedom Paper. I know you brothers know Freedom Paper, right? And we paying him a consulting fee to develop a paper company here in the city. We invested in building the warehouse, and we are training re-entry folks in the city to run and own that co-op. The municipal council just passed ASAP legislation that allows us to give a loan or purchase businesses from small or mid-sized companies with a loan and give that business to the workers there, right? And from the profit, they pay that loan off, a small interest loan they pay off to the city in order that they own the property in perpetuity or own the business in perpetuity. These are the things, see, co-ops and collective ownership and ownership period is the beginning of how you begin to stop gentrification, right? You have to begin to stop it. And so when people talk about inclusionary, inclusionary is a tool. That's not an end-all, be-all. It's a tool. It's a tool designed, especially if you have, what the sister said, an affordable housing trust fund. Because guess what? Our people not moving downtown. I don't care how long you fight or march, they not coming down here. They don't wanna be down here. Their families are too big to be down here, first of all, right? They have real families. They not millennials who live by theyself, came from college, or, you know, bankers from Wall Street, or these guys, they don't wanna live downtown. They wanna live in their neighborhood. They just don't wanna live next to vacant lots and dirty buildings and unsafe conditions. They want their neighborhood fixed up. Our job is to extract wealth from what they're doing downtown and force them to put it in the communities where people live at through affordable housing trust funds to get those young three brothers who are gonna build those property. And they may have a gap in their financing to take that money and put it in the gap in their financing so they have a full project and tell them we need them to pay, uh, or charge this amount of rent for their property. The other piece is to have a land bank or a land trust. When the state of New Jersey finishes passing a land bank, the city of Newark begins to create its own land bank that we're waiting in the wings to do. The land bank allows us to control the property that we have and begin to use it for things that we think it should be used for and not giving it out to speculators who come into, to these auctions and buy all this property up and then flip it and sell it at exorbitant prices. The land bank allows us to control it. Then you partner the land bank with a land trust. The land trust allows us to identify parts of the city and say, this part of the city is going to be affordable in perpetuity. So we get to say, from this block to that block, will always be affordable, no matter what, at this price. We get to do those things, but you have to have a mind to build to be able to make those things take place. The other piece is you need rent control. Now I hear people yelling, no, we need rent control. Newark has had rent control for a long time. We've had it for a long time. When I was a legislator, we strengthened the rent control. When I became the mayor, some people organized and they strengthened it even more, uh, even more. So we have one of the strongest rent control ordinances in the nation, right here in the city of Newark. There's some other ways that landlords navigate around it and try to, uh, not be involved in it by not registering their properties and doing all kinds of things. That just means we have to be aggressive. I'm arguing with people, say, oh, the rent control ordinance is bad because the landlords are not registered. Well, damn it, help me register them. Get you and your organization to come out with me. What you wanna meet, have a meeting about that. We gonna get together, we gonna get 15 of us, we gonna walk down this block, we gonna identify all the buildings that ain't registered, we gonna call the city and say, these not registered, and we gonna make them get on the registry, and this is the money that they owe. That's what we gonna do. That's revolutionary action and activism, not sitting there saying, oh, the buildings are not registered, look at you, look at you, look at you. It means get off your laurels, get yourself in the community, knock on some doors and say, these buildings are not registered. Get these buildings registered. That's what you should be doing. That's fundamentally what should be happening. Listen, our fundamental job after rent control, after all of those other pieces that I talked about, um, is also necessary for us to make sure that people in our community have wealth. They have to have wealth. If they don't have wealth, then there's no self-determination. You can't determine your own destiny without no resources. If you don't have no resources, you don't have no destiny. If you don't, if you don't have no wealth in your house, how your kids gonna eat? You gotta go to the bread line to get food from somebody else, right? If you don't have a decent education, you always gonna be depending on other people to do for you what you should be doing for yourself, right? And so it's important for us to build wealth in our community. That's why that's important. It's important. And the brother said something very, very deep about diverting funding from police agencies to other organizations. He pointed out Erika Ford, who just told me they getting $36 million in New York City, uh, funds that was diverted to do street organizing in their community. And I know her, when she was organizing and protesting, she took that to turn it into something real, to give people some real opportunity in their community and keep them alive longer. We just had a meeting in Newark a few weeks ago with the organizations in this town who are doing alternative police work to get them to unite together in something we calling the Brick City Peace Collective. To begin to get them to get out in the streets collectively, not separately. We even had Rutgers Hospital there, right? Because there was a doctor at Rutgers Hospital who treated a patient that was shot in the back. After they treated the patient, they referred them to the Newark Street Academy so they could get out, uh, get out of there and be go get a DED after that. We need to make that systemic and not just a happenstance, right? And so, we need to follow the lead of what's going on there. And so, we're having a meeting next week with the police agencies in Newark to tell them, "We need at least 1% to 5% of your funding to be diverted to a fund that'll fund these organizations to do alternative police work in our community." Newark Community Street Team, Newark Community Solutions, Newark Street Academy, Newark Youth Court, all these things that exist in our city already. We're doing that, and that helps empower people at the same time. This gentrification thing is difficult, folks. I just want you to know that. It's difficult. It's, if it was as simple as we could wave our hand and the stuff go away, guess what? It been a lot of hands waved already. This is a difficult thing, especially in communities that have no resources. Who depend on people to come there and dump resources on them. They hope they can make a deal with them, right? And that they would do that, and most of the time, they don't do what they say they was gonna do. And so, you spend your time trying to fight them for years to get them to do something that they had no intention on doing in the first place. So, we have to find opportunities to create wealth for ourselves, so we can do the things ourselves, while we're depending on other people to do for us, right? So, we're busy fighting each other. I say, "Look, we don't want the street sweeping contractor go to anybody else. We wanna do it ourselves." And so, there's people fighting against that. Why, I don't know. We don't want the cleaning contractor. We don't wanna spend $10 million to outside contractors. We wanna clean the buildings ourselves. We don't, we don't wanna, uh, uh, spend a whole bunch of money for you to, uh, 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 pick up our garbage. We wanna pick up our garbage ourselves. We don't wanna spend millions of dollars for you to do to us, pick up our snow. We wanna do it ourselves. We can hire our own people to get it done. And yes, it's a learning curve, and yes, we gonna fight to get it done. And yes, we gotta yell and scream at each other for us to do the right thing, because self-hatred is alive and well. To fight with each other, but to get it right. But we never, we never, we never relinquish our right to self-determination, 'cause we angry, or we feel like, uh, uh, we ain't gonna do it right anyway, or it ain't getting done the first month anyway. Them people wasn't cleaning up your streets in the first place, you just didn't pay attention to it five years ago. Now, you focused on it, 'cause the mayor done took the street sweeping contractor away. Now, everybody saying their streets wasn't clean. Your street wasn't clean 10 years ago. Now, 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 now that we saying, now that we saying we wanna buy our own damn street sweepers and, and, and hire our own people to clean our streets, now we focused, uh, uh, on our streets. We gotta have more discipline than that. We gotta have more discipline than that. And that, that's just a fact. And I don't care if you angry, if you mad, 'cause your anger and your madness is not new. You could be angry and mad all you want. What you need to be do, do is be organized. Kwame Toure said, "Organize, organize, organize." If you ain't in the organization, you go out there and yell and scream at the wall if you want. You gotta be a part of an organization, and guess what? You by yourself is not an organization. And you going to meetings yelling, "By yourself is not an organization." Organi- and tweeting ain't no damn organization either. I'ma sit down. Listen, I, I was, I, I was involved in some other stuff, and, you know, I was at a debate recently, and somebody got up and said, "Oh, the, the mayor got an organization. He's the, you know, they looking at me like I'm the power broker." That's funny, I laughed at that all the way home. You know why? 'Cause it took me 20 damn years to build an organization. That's why. And I'm not angry that I have an organization. I'm happy that I got an organization. 'Cause I remember I had $10,000 and was frying chicken in my mother's house in order to raise money to run for office when I was 24 years old, uh, uh, out here involved in these communities and these streets, raising my own money by myself with no organization, going against all of the money and all of the people. I'm glad I got an organization, and I'm glad I raised money, 'cause guess what? I listened to Kwame Toure. And more importantly, more importantly, I know who the hell Kwame Toure is. We isn't a bad time. You can't, you can't be no organizer, you ain't read nothing. You can't be walking around talking to people, you ain't read a damn thing. You gotta read all of the time. If I ain't learned nothing from my father, I learn how to read. I learn how to study. And guess what? I don't gotta agree with you either. My mother taught me that part. I don't gotta agree with you. This house is democratic. You ain't, I ain't gotta agree with you. I don't care if you the mayor or not, I don't gotta agree with you. And she'll say that to this present day. I don't gotta agree with you. You gotta convince me. You gotta convince, and your yelling ain't gonna convince me. You can't call me names, and that's gonna convince me to do something? You gotta struggle with me. And you gotta, if you love somebody, you wanna struggle with them. Don't say, "Oh, you gotta love the..." But you don't wanna struggle with them. All you wanna do is, uh, call people names. Struggle with people. Struggle with me. I struggled with my mother and my brothers and sisters, 'cause I loved them to life. And if you put your hands on them, I will hurt you. And we, and, and we disagree with one another all of the time, but at the end of the day, I love these brothers and sisters up here. I love Ron Daniels. He called me the other day, criticized about a few things that's going on in the city. I love the brother. But he has the right to do that, like I love my mother. I love Mamie Bridford. She called, she text me this morning to complain about a few things that need to take place in this town. Don't go, don't, don't, don't be outside fighting the very people who are here to help you get to the place that you wanna get to. The last thing, I promise. I was at a, I was in, uh, in, in Oakland at the My Brothers Keeper Event. I was there. And it was some guys outside, and they was protesting to my brothers' keepers event. They was talking about President Obama. But President Obama wasn't even there. And what, and the, the point is, it was a whole bunch of black and brown boys from all over the country, even Native Americans. It was Native Americans in there. You know, giving us the history, it was a beautiful thing. And they were talking about criminal justice reform and all kinds of things. But the people outside protesting, and I said, "Listen, how is this helping to organize those boys in there?" And you disagree with them fighting criminal justice reform?